Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no redeeming justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to our meeting of February 19th. I had to look at the date there. Please note that council members Solis and Young are absent. Okay, I want to welcome everybody. I've already done that. Our first item on our agenda is items from council. Everything seems to have my name next to it, but before we get into any of that, do you guys have anything you need to bring up?
I have one issue. I was going to see if we could get an update on the construction of Crestwood between Ben Jordan and Laurent.
Yes, sir. That project is set to advertise for the first time this Sunday, and then it will be followed up the following Sunday for the required second time. We anticipate to open those bids in mid-March, have that contract to y'all, in front of y'all, in probably the second meeting in April, and then hopefully start construction probably mid-summer, once all the contracting is done.
And that's between Ben Jordan and Laurent?
Yes, ma'am. Phase one, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Very good. Before you sit down, I have some, the, and we talked about this briefly before the meeting, the Fillmore-Taylor-Polk area, those streets, where are, are they on the CIP? Can you update me on those?
Sure. That's the subdivision typically referred to as Blue Ridge subdivision.
Okay.
And y'all, council has not seen that, that on any of the CIP presentations that we brought before you, but it is one that's going to be proposed to y'all for the 2024 window, which is going to be the next window you see when we bring the CIP back to you in, in April. Right now, we're in the very early stages of putting that CIP together, so I can't be definite that it'll be on there, but it is one that we're eyeing heavily to add to that list. I want to remind you that it's, it's probably going to be a multiple phase, similar to North Heights. And again, it'll start with the utilities and then, you know, ship to, move to the next phase of utilities and come back to that original one and do the, do the streets at that time. So while we may start utilities in 2024, it may be 2025 or later before we rehab that street.
And that's a rebuild, curb and gutter too, I would imagine, on most of this?
Yes, sir. I believe it would be.
Because they're just, they're rolling and it's terrible.
Absolutely.
Would you happen to know, or can, if there's drainage included? I was under the understanding that it was undersized, poor drainage, so that would include that as well?
There will be some drainage, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you very much, y'all.
Sure.
Mayor, before you get any further into the agenda, I would like to pull, staff would like to pull item D2 off of the consent agenda to be taken up so that we can propose an amendment to that. That's the second and third reading of the Gulf Coast Ordinance.
Okay. Okay. Anything else from council? Let's, I have a couple of items, the Hurricane Harvey fund update. Who's going to take care of that for us?
Wesley is.
Sir.
Mr. Mayor, as I explained to you earlier, this does not include a status on any grants that we've applied for. So if you'd like us to bring back, this is what FEMA is doing with FEMA reimbursement. So if you'd like for us to come back with grant updates, we can do that. Where we've applied for hazardous mitigation grants are CDRG, DR.
That'd be good in a later meeting, maybe whenever the, I know John Kaminsky's involved in when he's here, so yeah. And this is, I understand, been provided to us on and off. I just wanted to have this conversation in an open forum.
All right. So we put together this presentation to show the total costs incurred to date, what we've received from insurance and FEMA, and then as well as what's still outstanding. On this first slide here, I just mentioned on the category A and B, these projects, we receive 100% from FEMA, and then categories C through G is 90% reimbursement from FEMA on eligible costs. To really get a full picture of this, you need to look at this slide and the next slide together. As far as category A and B, the only amounts outstanding are the $15,000 from debris removal, which we've already submitted our request for that and expect to receive that soon. For category C through G, you can see that we've, we have about $436,000 in remaining costs. And if you go to slide six. So the first project there that we're waiting on is the street and directional signs. FEMA's requesting that we go back and, and look at GPS on those signs and kind of make some corrections to their initial inspection of it because they weren't as accurate as they needed to be. So we're looking at that one. The next group of projects, all the documentation has been submitted on these. There's just some discrepancies in what FEMA says we should have received from insurance and what we actually received from insurance. So we're trying to get that cleared up before we finalize those projects. The last two, Grover's Bend, the cost of that project's actually been increased now to $230,000, and that's approved by FEMA. We're kind of holding off on that for right now because the, that area is included in another grant that we're looking to do in order to shore up the, the riverbank and the erosion along the riverbank. But we're going to, we're going to keep that one out there just in case that, that grant falls through. And the remaining one is still, for the Riverside Stadium is, that's in the state's review, and we anticipate receiving that one soon. In the second to last column, in the 5% DAC, what that is, is a direct administrative cost that we're eligible for on all eligible projects. So really, it's going to be 5% of, of total eligible costs before any insurance reductions or anything like that. So we anticipate that amount to be $474,000. We've started the, the first submission of it. We get forward opportunities at it. And so we're doing our first one now since we've already received most of the money from FEMA. And we can do one each quarter, so we'll, we'll try to do the bulk of them this time. And then, once we've had the rest of the projects obligated, we'll, we'll do the second, hopefully final one.
Now Wesley, that DAC, that's your administrative, you're allowed to recoup costs to do all the paperwork, right?
Right, essentially, yeah, just.
Okay.
I have a general question. I'm sorry if you said this right up front and I missed it. Is this money that we're waiting for, money that we have, or a combination?
The money that we are waiting for is going to be in the middle two columns here, that $436,000, then that $475,000.
Okay.
As well as the, the $15,000 here from that, that column. Everything else, and the insurance proceeds, and then the FEMA proceeds for 100% and 90%, we've received.
Thank you.
This slide here kind of summarizes all the projects, the total cost and total proceeds. You can see there at the bottom right that we do expect to recoup all the, the cost and then some. So are there any questions?
Go back.
Sorry?
Too fast for these old eyes. I can't look that, speaking for myself. Okay. I mean, so my impression, and I'll direct to the city manager, our reimbursement from FEMA has been very successful.
I think so, and we think so in finance, but you have to give a lot of credit to the finance staff and how they documented everything to start with during the storm because we knew from past experience how important that was on that documentation. And Andrew Jacob started it, and Wesley has picked it up and continued it. So, no, we're, and then two, working with TML on getting insurance reimbursement. We're very pleased with our TML relationship and how quickly they've reimbursed us.
Right. And Gilbert had wanted me to highlight the fact that, as you can see, I mean, the total cost here, everything has to be paid for upfront and then reimbursed. So it really highlights the significance of having reserves in place to be able to cover these costs in order to get the work done as soon as possible. And as Charmel had mentioned, the efforts of, of TML were, were very vital in this whole process in getting, getting all the claims put in and getting us reimbursed upfront on, on some of those items.
No, it's, I, you kind of took away what I was going to say about patting y'all on the back for the, the paperwork's a mess. And I remember day one, y'all were keeping tabs and signing sheets and hours and, because you knew what you had to submit. Wesley, I don't think you even went to city then, were you?
No, sir, I was not.
But I know that you've learned from everybody now, but it was very meticulous, and I appreciate that work. The, you know, one of the things, y'all remember when all the traffic signals were out. To me, that was one of the most dangerous situations we had. It tends to be overlooked because luckily, no one had an accident that I'm aware of. But the city of Austin came and helped us get all those running. That, and of course, the city of Austin billed us, rightly so. That wasn't in their budget to come help Victoria for free. I get it. But that was not reimbursable by FEMA. Is that correct? We've been denied that?
Correct.
Okay. There might be a political solution to that. I don't know. I just don't seem right. Does anybody remember the amount?
It was $216,000.
216?
And it was, would have been reimbursable if we'd gone through other channels and ordered signs and waited.
They're, not through FEMA. There's another agency. It's FHWA, because these traffic signals are located on, on federal facilities. So it falls under their jurisdiction and not FEMA's. And it's something we're still looking into as far as getting the emergency repairs reimbursed. The, the permanent work is in the process of being awarded through that agency, though.
So we made the decision that the lives of our citizens was worth more than the reimbursement, and I think we made the right decision.
We didn't even discuss, we, we followed the paperwork to get to the state to try to get assistance. We did what we were supposed to do, STAR reports, and I coined the phrase, I think, at one time, that they go to a far, far off galaxy. So we, we did the proper paperwork on that, but at the time, we didn't know if we were going to get reimbursed or not. But we made the decision that it was a critical safety issue for residents to get those lights back up and running, so. But it goes back to having a reserve, and you know, sometimes you have to use a reserve for emergencies.
That's what it's for. Okay. Okay. And then so next, next meeting or whenever, we'll, the outstanding grants and other projects, we'll hear about those. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Wesley.
Thank you, Wesley.
The mowing contract on Loop 462.
Sure, Daniel has a PowerPoint to present, to write down where the costs lie.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, and Mrs. Garrett.
Left.
I brought to you today a brief overview of the mowing contract, and we will get started. Again, this, this mowing is only the section from Highway 97 to Salem Road. Part of the section that is most trafficked. So to start off, we have the mowing schedule, which is a, over the year, combination between TechDOT, our contractor AJ Shredding, and the Parks Department. And with the exception of the month of September, as you see on that schedule up there, it just depends on the TechDOT's decision whether or not to mow it. And if they don't, we typically pick it up if it's needed. And granted, all of these months and stuff, we work together with TechDOT and AJ Shredding so that, you know, if it's a dry season, we don't mow. If it is a wet season, when we have a growing season, we do mow. The Parks Department is kind of like the Phil Safe. So we always try to let TechDOT do their job, then we have AJ Shredding, and then we've got the Parks Department that comes in and mows what we need to mow. The areas to be mowed is basically all the flat surface, the slopes going up on the on and off ramps to help with any safety concerns of visibility, and around the tree areas that are near the intersections. The total contract amount with AJ Shredding is for $56,000, and that's paid through Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation. TechDOT mows two times per year, possibly three with September. Parks mows three, possibly four with the month of September. And AJ Shredding, that $56,000 you see there is for four times a year, with the total for the year being nine potential mowing cycles for the year. This is the area highlighted in green. As you can see, Highway 87 is to the far left, and then we go over to Salem Road, over to your right. If I'm clicking too fast, just let me know. And then at the end, I added this in as far as how much it costs our department to mow. If we mow the total of four times, the total is there at the bottom. That's mainly labor costs with just a little bit of supplies, such as fuel and herbicide chemicals. Are there any questions?
So depending on weather, I mean, the first people to get out of mowing would be the Parks Department, then second is the contractor?
Typically, it's the contractor and then we mow, but we go by the month. And if we fall out of cycle, we'll talk with AJ Shredding, see what they've got planned. And then if they can't make it, then we try to get out there.
I, and the reason I bring this up, council, we're in the county, aren't we? And, and we often take upon projects like this as the state of Texas pulls out and cuts back, and they mow three times, and we know that's not enough. We know who's going to get the phone calls when the grass grows in a rainy season. It's going to be us. And as I said, we're in the county, and we often overlook asking them to participate and help out. So I've had one conversation with one county commissioner, but if y'all don't mind, I'd like to reach out to the county and see if they would mow it once or twice to kind of even that burden out. Does that sound like something y'all don't agree with? Because again, I mean, and I'm not, we often take on these projects and forget there's a partner we have that might be willing to help offset some of that cost. So I wanted to kind of go over this and understand it better, so I appreciate your information. So I'll reach out to them and see if maybe, and then let staff know, maybe perhaps they can pick up a mowing or two and take that burden off of you guys.
Okay.
I have a question. In your presentation, you made a comment that they don't mow the sloped areas. Does, is that a problem ultimately for someone?
On the overpasses, they don't mow the sloped areas because it's too steep. We don't, because we don't have the equipment to do that. But we do try to hit the on and off ramps, right, you know, so far out from the on and off ramps on either side.
TechDOT does mow the slopes.
Yes, they do.
When their contractor comes to, they do.
Okay. I just wondered if the county had equipment for that also. That's an area that we're not able to mow.
I, I, I don't know. I kind of doubt it, but, because I don't think that's the kind of maintenance they tend to do. But the other type that the Parks Department does, I'm sure they could, and I had one brief conversation with one commissioner. He seemed interested, so we'll, I'll see where I can go with that. So, okay. Thank you, y'all.
Thank you. Thanks, Daniel.
And finally, again, the last one is me. I want to talk about the fire contract. I'm just looking for a little consensus tonight. Chief, I doubt we'll need anything from you.
Okay, I'm just sure if you have any questions.
Okay, I appreciate that. Just a refresher, so I think the original contract was in '09. As you know, we provide fire services to the entire county, not just the city, the, all the way out to the county limit. And then the county reimburses some of that cost. And historically, that's been a subject of negotiation over the years. I've been in a few meetings with the prior judge, and you know, it, it's somewhat arbitrary in the amount that we get recouped, in my opinion, anyway. The original contract was at 14.5% of the budget. And I was talking with the city manager about this, and this was done when Charles Winwahan was our city manager. And that contract encompasses the library, the fire department, and then the, some of the animal control services the county does on our behalf, or a couple of ordinances we've passed. And as memory serves, the 14.5 kind of was the net of all those services done at that time, back in '09. Was it '09, I believe? '07, excuse me. Anyway, so that's where the 14.5 came from. But there's been amendments throughout the years and negotiations, and I remember one fondly, sitting with Don Posey. And that number has been tweaked and thrown around and lowered over the years. And I'm of the opinion that we just need to stick to the contract. So I have a few numbers for you. 1718, they paid, the last, excuse me, the last two years, it's been a fixed fee. In 1718, it was 1.685 million. In our current budget year, it went to 1.835. And those were negotiated numbers. I don't even like to use that word for, because I don't think you can negotiate a fire service. It's just, but that's what we have. That's currently where we're at. Now, that 1.835 ends this year, and it reverts back to the 14.5. So it's been amended six times over all these years. So if you factor in 2% to 3% growth rate for the next year at 14.5, it's right over $2 million. That's what it'll end up be, being. It's our service, so the county has to let us know by May 1 if they want to negotiate or discuss. They don't have to do anything. It just goes to 14.5 in October of this year. And so what I'm asking for is consensus is just to leave it at that, leave it at the 14.5, which is what's in the contract. I don't really want to, I have other numbers.
I'm fine with the, just letting it go to the contract that was agreed upon.
Yeah.
From the city's perspective.
Okay. I mean, there's a lot of numbers and a lot of data we could talk about. They stay at about 20% of the costs.
Correct.
Or out of city limits.
Yes.
You know, you could say that. Because there's a lot of things that have been thrown around over the years. It should be based on this. It should be based on that. I'm at the point, just leave it at 14.5. And I just want to have this discussion out here in public with everybody. They are allowed to discuss it in closed session. We are not. So just pointing that out. Y'all good with that? Okay. Of course, things can change, I know. But all right, that's all I wanted to do, was have that discussion. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right. I don't think I have anything else. Nothing else from council. We'll move into citizens' communication. Anyone that would like to come forward and speak about anything at all now would be the time. Just give us your name for the record, and if you could, that'd a courtesy to everyone. Limit your remarks to five minutes, sir.
My name is Roque Estrada, and I live on 4507 Hayek Street on the Lone Creek Edition. And I come over here to talk to y'all about the drainage in our area. I called the city in 2015. They made a work order to clean the ditches in, around my area. They haven't done anything. They tell me that the reason they cannot clean the ditches in front of our houses and stuff because they have to start from the Lone Creek and come down towards our neighborhood. But the reason they haven't done that is because the nuns would not give them permission to get on their property to clean the ditch. And this has been going on since 2015. I don't understand that. But anyway, I went to talk to the nuns last month, and I asked them if the city had asked for permission to get on their property to clean the ditch. They said that the first time the city approached them to clean it, to clean, to get on their property to clean the ditch was in 2018, maybe around October or November. So all this time, the city has not been telling me the truth, that the reason they haven't done that is because the nuns wouldn't give them permission. The nuns told me that they had never denied the city permission from getting their property to clean the ditch. Matter of fact, they have a gate on Lone Tree Road to access their property, and they told the city to put a lock on that gate, and since then, the city has a lock on that gate so they can go in and out and clean the ditch. But nothing has been done.
Mr. Estrada, help me just, I want to know where you're talking about, on the nun's property. You said on Lone Tree out, the land is farmed?
The farmland is there between, from Lone Creek Edition to the creek belongs to the nuns. It's, it's a farmland.
All right.
And the ditch that comes to our property, to our area, is right along on the north side of their property.
Okay.
And it's really bad. The water, when it rains, it stays there. The roads are so deteriorated for the simple reason that the water stays in the ditch for a week or two and has softened the shoulders of the road. And I wish some of y'all would go and ride around that area and see how deteriorated the roads are.
Okay.
And I'm afraid one of these days, the school bus is probably going to have some kind of issues there. It's really bad. I'd like, I'd like to know what the city plans to do now that they have the permission from the nuns.
And you're on Hayek Street?
I live on 4507 Hayek.
Okay.
And Donald can give an update. This is a project we've been working on for several months. So Mr. Reese can let council know what has been done to date.
Okay. Okay. After citizens' communications.
That's all I have.
If you'll stay around a few minutes, and then we'll get an update.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Citizens' communication is still open. If anyone else would like to come forward, now would be the time. Okay, see.
Sir, someone specific?
No, he canceled again.
Oh.
Mr. Ward, Andrew Ward, yes, he called 3:30 and said he wasn't going to be here.
Maybe next time. Okay, we'll, we'll close citizens' communication. Is it appropriate to get an update real quick, Donald?
Sure.
Okay, before we go into.
And I know it's, it's correct. We had to work on getting permission because that's private property. We had to have permission. And so when we finally did get that, I know, one, we've had a lot of problems because there's been raining. But Donald can explain what we've done today.
And I'm sorry, I don't have the exact dates, but, but I do know that, that since I became involved, we, we had made contact with the nuns through their attorney, and we were trying to get access to that property. And we finally were able to get access to it, I'd say, probably four or five months ago, sometime in late 2018. And we did make some progress on that large section of outfall. Matter of fact, we got it cleaned up to a, right to the front of a large pipe. And my guys tell me that as soon as they were able to clean that section, there was a huge amount of water drained out of there. Unfortunately, there is a lot of work that still needs to be done. As we moved down the roadway there and started working, the road was just deteriorating, and this is just a farm road. This is not a city road that I'm talking about. That road was becoming so rut, so we were causing so many ruts in there, we decided that we needed to pull out before we did so much damage that we couldn't repair it. Unfortunately, we've been at the mercy of the weather right now so that we can get back in there and finish that work. We, we talked about getting some oilfield mats to lay in there, but the rental of those can get expensive over time, and you'd need so many of them so that you could have your, your heavy equipment and your dump trucks working at the same time. It just, it just wouldn't be feasible. But we have been working on it, and we do plan to get back in there as soon as we get, get some weather to do it.
Okay.
As I recall, this isn't a short fix, but I think Lone Tree Acres is something that you're looking at for road construction, and I'm sure you'll be dealing with it at that time.
You know what, the, I don't remember what's, where we have Lone Tree Acres in our, in our CIP. I can't remember if it's.
I guess, I remember seeing Tibballetti, and so that, I know that's in the same area.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just don't remember what year that is right now.
I don't either. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm tired of the rain, so I hope it stops so you can get that, those ditches fixed.
I want to point out that even, once it does start, stop raining and we have some dry weather, it's going to take a while. That, that, that road over there is, is just the black gumbo that we have, and it's, it's going to take a while to dry out. So we want to get there. We want to get it done. It's just going to take time.
Is that a city road?
No, no, this is just the, the road that we're trying to get to is just on the farm road. It runs beside the outfall.
Okay.
So that we can drive our equipment down there and work on the, work on that ditch from the side of the ditch.
You're not talking about his particular road?
No, no, we're not talking about his particular road. No, not. This is just the road that we need to get, this, this goes through the gate he mentioned. It leads onto that road.
This is on the nun's property?
This is on the nun's property.
So I know a lot of those ladies. I can complain about their roads now. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. Well, I appreciate the update, so.
Sure.
Hope it continues.
Donald, I've got a question.
Sure.
So the city road go, Hayek, specifically Hayek, starts at Anthony and goes down to the gate, or how many feet from the gate?
I'm not sure. I, I really don't know.
Mr. Estrada's called me twice, and I've communicated with the city manager, and I've been out there twice, and he sent me pictures of the rain. There's a side street that comes in at the end closer to the gate. Is that Tibballetti or Massou?
I'm, I'm sorry. I don't know. I'd have to, I'd have to go out there and look at it.
Massou comes off of Lone Tree, if that's how you say it. And then there's kind of a little jig and a jog, and then Tibballetti goes further north. So it's Massou and then Hayek.
Because at the end of Anthony, not Anthony, excuse me, Hayek, where that side road comes in, like 200 feet before the gate, that road is horrible, and he said a school bus has to travel that. And I can see where it's going to have trouble real soon negotiating that turn because that whole street right there at that intersection, and again, I can't remember the name. It's either Massou or Tibballetti or, or the other one.
We can take a look at it and see if there's anything we can do temporarily.
But it is definitely an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Bring that up. It's CIP. Y'all don't forget. See if something, yeah. Okay, thank you, Donald. Let's move into items with public hearings.
Item C one is an ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen nineteen City of Victoria Water Waste Water Fund budget to provide funding in the amount of one million four hundred and thirty-two thousand six hundred and forty dollars for the relocation of a sixteen inch water line in Highway fifty-nine North from Loop four sixty-three to Hill Road as part of the U.S. Highway fifty-nine North Furniture Road Phase Two project, providing for savings and declaring an effective date.
Okay, we have a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing on C one. If anyone would like to speak to this item alone, now's the time. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, same. Okay, thank you. C two.
Item C two is an ordinance amending Chapter fourteen of the Victoria City Code to update requirements pertaining utilities and game rooms, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for publication, codification, enforcement, and savings, and declaring an effective date.
We'll open the public hearing on C two. If anyone would like to speak to that item alone, now would be the time. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move that we approve item C two.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Okay, ayes have it. So we'll, you all want to do D two? You remove that or?
Let's go ahead and do D two first, which is an ordinance amending Article four to Chapter twenty-two of the City Code to regulate the use of golf carts and neighborhood vehicles on city streets, providing for publication, enforcement, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date. This is second and third reading.
I'd like to make a motion to table item D two until the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Yeah, a motion to table does require a second.
A second?
Okay, thank you. Just for explanation of why, and I talked to Dr. Young last night about this, and he was, I really want to discuss this with him here since he had brought this ordinance forward. I have a concern about golf carts being on a road that's thirty-five miles per hour. The way it's written right now, golf cart, which, if I read the definition correctly, to be on a, a road has to be between twenty-one and twenty-five miles per hour is the max and minimum speed it can go. And so the way we have it written right now, a golf cart can get on Sam Houston, Ben Jordan, Red River, and cruise down the roadway. I know when we looked at the neighborhood electric vehicles, the state allows them to operate on a forty-five mile per hour road, but we had knocked it down in this ordinance to thirty-five mile per hour road, which is their max speed so that we don't limit traffic flow. I have the same issue with golf carts on a thirty-five mile per hour road. And I want to look at it, take a little bit more time to see if we can't get it right the first time to either put it to streets that are thirty miles per hour or else just list streets that they can't operate on. And that's the reason for tabling it, so we just have just a little bit more time, a couple of weeks, and have Dr. Young here as well to discuss it.
I believe that'd probably be an order, my own thoughts. My concern is mixing of two types of vehicles. It'd be like mixing Piper Cuzz with jumbo jets. Not a good idea. It can be done, but it's sure isn't easy. And so I have concerns as well. Other cities have done it. I really don't have any experience on how well it turned out for them, though. I really don't have enough information.
You okay with waiting? And, and Mrs. Leece will maybe be here too.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, just to table it, and we'll just put it on the next agenda. Everybody understand? Any further discussion, sir?
It does require a vote.
Right, right.
Okay.
Well, I could probably, never mind. Okay, all those in favor of tabling say aye.
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 Those opposed, okay, ayes have it. Thank you, council. So we'll, we have two items on the consent agenda.
The remaining two items are, first, the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of February fifth, two thousand and nineteen, and second, a resolution approving an expenditure for the repair of a water pump at the city's raw water pump station from Odessa Pumps in the amount of forty thousand seventy dollars, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the repair, and declaring an effective date.
I move that we approve item D one and D three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, ayes have it. E one.
Item E one is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Victoria Engineering, doing business as Urban Engineering for the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Storm Water Pump Station and Hardening or Replacement of Flood Gates Project in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars, and declaring an effective date.
I move to approve item E one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Real quick, and I don't know if y'all have questions, but tell us what this will do. Just real quick. I know it's written up pretty good, but.
I see Ray's back there. Ray, do you want to answer that? Do it.
Well, you don't, I mean.
It, it's really to, well.
It's a grant application. We're working, Grant Works, to do a grant application to get funding to replace the floodgates that are along Guadalupe River and at a pump station at a location, at least one location where they have to set up temporary pumping every time that it rains.
There's one in front of the zoo. And so this is to improve it, to prevent flooding on those south side areas down there along the river?
Correct.
Okay, that's really what I wanted to make sure that was said, so.
But this portion of it is attempting to get a grant.
Yeah, you guys are going to look at it all for us, and then we'll see if we can get the money.
They're going to do the cost estimate and the project definition. And then if we get the grant, then Urban, there'll be another contract with Urban to come back and do the total design of the project and all. So, you know, just for the public's sake, this is CDBG DR money, disaster relief money. So there's a two-prong test. It has to, there has to have been damage from Harvey, but it also has to meet the CDBG income eligibility level. So it, you know, the focus is down in this area that floods quite a bit, so.
Does it involve the levees at all? Are y'all looking at the levees?
No.
There's some remnants of levees, right?
The flap gates go on the pipes that go through the levee. There's holes in the levee, it's a drainage pipe, and it lets the water out.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you're not talking about shoring up the levee or anything.
It's not shoring up the levee or raising the levee, but there's drainage pipes that go through the levee.
Yeah.
And they have gates on the end of them that are supposed to keep the water from flowing backwards. And at the same time, they keep the water from flowing backwards, they also keep the rainwater from flowing out into the river. The pumps are to solve that problem. The gates are just antiquated. They were put in in the twenties? Twenties? Thirties? Forties? Forties.
The forties?
Long time ago.
So we got our money's worth. I hope we got our money's worth then, okay.
They have some new, they have some new technology now, believe it or not.
Imagine that. Well, thank you, Ray, I appreciate it.
Portable pump?
I'm sorry?
Prior to this, we've used a portable pump.
Portable pump?
We use portables now, that's what we do. We place pumps.
If this comes to be, we would have a permanent pump?
I, I think that's the plan, yes.
Okay.
We're looking at.
That's what I was trying to make sure of. Very good.
Yeah, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Okay, ayes have it.
Item E two is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an employment agreement with Thomas Gush as the city attorney, and declaring an effective date.
Move to approve item E two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I see no need for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay, ayes have it.
Thank you, council.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Item E three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with Gulf Bend Center for Partner Counties for the expansion of Texas, excuse me, the Mental Health Peace Officers Task Force, and declaring an effective date.
Move to approve item E three.
Second.
Okay, motion, second, questions, or you want to tell us a little about it, or?
Evening, mayor, members of city council. Primarily here just to answer questions. This is just a, we have an existing agreement to operate interlocally with Gulf Bend, and this replaces that agreement. In essence, what it really does is it allows us to work with partner counties in addition to the, the principal entities before were City of Victoria, County of Victoria, and Gulf Bend. And now, this new agreement will cover the additional surrounding counties to participate with Gulf Bend and the Mental Health Task Force.
Okay, very good.
I have a question, or I'm not sure if it's a question or a comment, but I remember when we started this, there was some discussion that that was really a pilot program to see if it would, if it would work or be effective. Is this closer to what the program had envisioned, or is it even a larger thought? Or, or am I not remembering correctly?
No, you are remembering correctly. This is, this is a major step in the right direction. There's still some work that needs to be done in terms of bringing additional resources to help with the, the mental health issues that we're having in our community. But this is, has always been an idea to bring on the partner counties to help leverage their resources to, to assist in this effort as well.
Very good. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, chief.
Item D four is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Perkins Engineering Consultants Incorporated to prepare permit renewal applications for the Texas Pollutant Discharge Elimination System for the city's regional wastewater treatment facility and the Odom Street Wastewater Treatment Facility in an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars, and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt E four.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So how much that permit costs with T C E Q, do you remember?
Permit itself?
Yeah, do you remember? Put you on the spot, I'm sorry, Donald.
It's an annual fee that we, we do, we pay annually for it. It's, it's pretty expensive.
Six figures, I know.
It's close to six figures.
Yeah.
For both, for both plants.
A lot of people don't realize that.
Yeah.
So we're paying that fee to the state, and this group helps us get the permit straight. Make sure, yeah, you can't not get that permit.
You have to have it.
We'd have a problem.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same, okay, thank you.
Item E five is a resolution supporting House Bill sixteen twenty-seven to remove Victoria County from the list of affected counties under the Texas Emissions Reduction Plan, and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt E five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Bocknight, you want to update us a little? I know you've worked on this a lot.
I want to thank Mr. Lesec and Mrs. Garrett. We started this probably a year and a half ago. As we adopted new codes, we started looking at, and when the state during the last legislative session did not approve funding for air quality testing, and we had to downsize that portion of Mr. Lesec's department. And as we dug into it, we found some really strange things. We first asked former Congressman Ferentzold's office for help, and J.D. Kennedy, his district manager, helped us with the EPA to figure out why we were on this affected counties list. And it come to find out, Victoria, they had no problem with. EPA was fine, federal government didn't have a problem with this. We were doing our two ten-year back-to-back, I can't remember. State implement, implementation plans. I think we have four years left on the second one. And so after getting the green light from EPA that we had no issues, we, J.D. actually helped us and went to T C E Q. And at T C E Q, the most astonishing thing happened. They said, the only reason you're listed as an affected county was we had to come up with some term for those counties that wanted to get grant money from the state. And so since there's no more grant money, there's no reason for us to be listed as an affected county anymore. And at that time, we approached Representative Morrison and said, could we look at getting us off of this affected counties list and explain the reasons why? She had some legislation drafted, which is a very simple bill, maybe two line items, to take us off the affected counties list with the state. And this is just a resolution in support of the House bill that she filed last week.
And if I understand correctly, too, by being on this list, it required us to adopt stricter codes.
Yes, so.
Which was hence the real issue.
Yeah, we have the local building codes that we had adopted that were pretty much mandated by the state. We couldn't make any amendments to it. And since we can't make amendments without going to the energy lab at Texas A&amp;M, we lose control over our local codes, and there's some things that the city had, had wanted to amend. In addition, this is something that the EDC is always having to explain to companies wanting to come in and saying, you're on an affected counties list. What's our mission's going to do to your county if, if we come here? And we're having to run modeling for them, and that funding's not here anymore either to run that modeling, but there's not a need for it. We did learn something during the time that we had the grant money, and that's ninety percent of the air that we have in Victoria is from transport air. And my understanding is that that technology, we didn't know it when we first started it, and when technology is developed, we're able to determine that, you know, ninety percent of the bad air is not something that we produce. It just comes here from elsewhere, Missouri, Mexico, Thiers, Pasadena. So, I appreciate everybody's work on it, and hopefully we'll get a hearing and get it to the floor. Oh, and the, the governor's environmental policy advisor called this week just to get the particulars on it, gave him the, the same stuff that I just told you all. He's, he was glad that we already talked to T C E Q and the EPA, so.
Very good.
Yep.
I just remember that we were so frustrated with the codes and why we were forced, and then somebody looked up and said, well, we're on that list. And then you took to football, and, because we asked, like you said, very good description. We talked to Blake's office, and then, you know, good work. It took a long time to get to this point.
And Rick Madrid's been a big help through this process too, with the codes.
He's got a big smile on his face over there, I see.
It'd be a lot easier to be able to do local amendments to those codes that are better for our builders.
Right, right. How long has this taken? When did we start this? Right after the hurricane?
It was right before the hurricane, I thought.
Yeah?
So.
So just two years.
So the county's in support of it, they're planning to do a resolution next week, and I've talked to the Port Authority, and they're going to do a supporting resolution as well.
You're lining up everything. You don't make darn sure everybody votes for it up there. That's good, that's good. Thank you for all your hard work, so.
Thank you for the explanation, too. That really made it very clear.
Yeah, very good. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, all right, ayes have it. One, city manager report.
Wes is going to do an update on the warrant roundup. It's, or is Tiffany gonna do it? I see he's turning around looking. So the approach this year is a little bit different than we've done in years past. So I think it's a great approach.
Good evening, mayor and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on the warrant resolution campaign that the municipal court is participating in. So, sorry, I can't hear myself. Traditionally, the City of Victoria participates in the statewide warrant roundup, and instead, this year, we've opted to go with a more proactive approach. This is actually our second year with this particular program. So the event will begin this Thursday, on the 21st. We will have open dockets on Thursday and Monday. And the open docket is available for anybody with either an outstanding citation or a warrant, and they can come in and get that resolved with the court. And so on Thursday at 9:00 a.m. or 1:30 p.m. will be our check-in times, and Monday on the 25th at 1:00 p.m. We've mailed out approximately 1,500 notices to our citizens with outstanding citations, and our collection firm has also done this as well. And we do have a video that we would like to show that has some more information regarding this.
Victoria will not be participating in warrant roundup this year. Instead, we are having open court days. Have you received this postcard in the mail? This postcard means that you have an active or pending warrant for your arrest. Here's how it works. Come to the municipal court located at 107 West Wanlin Street on February 21st or the 25th. Check-in is before the scheduled court times listed. You can either pay your fines or work with the court to discuss your options. This is an opportunity to resolve any pending citations where you can discuss your case with the judge or prosecutor and see what options are available. Community service or a reduction of fines is possible. You will not be arrested at this event. You can also check to see if you have any violations or if you have a warrant out for your arrest by going to www.covcourt.com. Simply fill out your name and birthday to find out.